Welcome to Village of Webster Board Meeting, April 25th, 2019. And if you would stand please, moving forward the side. Carl, would you lead us today?
Yes, sir. My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. First order of business tonight, I'd like to open it up to public comment from the audience, so if anybody would like to address the board, please come up to the podium and
Peter Elder, 59 Downing Street. First, I just want to compliment Jake and his guys and the crews out there, they did a great job with the sidewalk. I don't mind that using my driveway with that kind of quality there, so thank you for doing that. But the real reason I'm up here tonight is to remind everyone about an event that's occurring on Sunday, May 5th, at 2:00 PM at the Harmony House, and it's called, the title of it's Whirling Around the Mystery of Sprung Dance Floors. So as you're probably aware, May is Sower Federation Month, and this has been put on by the museum through the Historic Properties Committee, and Lynn Barnes had a great deal to do with putting this together, and so has Sharon Pratt, so, but if you're not aware, this 30-second capsule here, in the past, what they often did, still do sometimes, like for instance with areas that do floors that are safe for ballet, they'll have floors that are constructed so that they give under the weight of the dance floor. And so it was something that, it wasn't really common, but it wasn't that uncommon either, for such floors to be made that way in the past. The Harmony House's floor is not a sprung floor, because the Harmony House's floor was not meant to dance on, it was meant to meet on, that's what the Grange did, but it is a very nice floor though. But you will find there were a few sprung floors in the village, but they were always where the facility was actually created for dancing. So I think this might have been posted up on the Facebook page or the website at some point maybe, if not, maybe we can get together and do that, but it's a great program, I would encourage everybody to come again, it's Sunday, May 5th, 2019, at 2:00 PM at the Harmony House. It's being hosted by Steve Jordan, who is sort of an expert on this type of construction. So if it's okay, I'm just gonna pass the invitation out to everybody, and I know you have fun if you can make it, that would be great, and if not, if you could pass along.
Thank you, Peter.
And we're really looking forward to seeing what happens with this, so, and it should be very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for enlightening us to visit on that, it was history.
So when you think they're all light, I'm sorry, so when you think they're all light on their feet in the old photographs, maybe not, the floor was helping.
Anyone else would like to address the board this evening? Okay, I will close the floor, and we will move next to first resolution of the evening, and that is to approve the 2019-2020 fee schedule. Everybody can take a look at the fee schedule, hopefully you have at this particular point, I have, you've noticed that there are a fair number of changes to the fee schedule that had been suggested. Does anybody have any comments or other additions they'd like to make? Nope?
No.
Okay, then I would ask for a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second would be approval of the 2019-2020 payroll chart. If you take a look at that, you'll notice that the board, as well as the Village Board, the planning zoning board, ban historian, there will be no change to the 2019-20 salary, it will be remaining the same as it was 2018 and '19. Changes will be to office staff, superintendent, building department, department of public works in the sewer treatment plant workers, so you notice those. Any questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have tentative budget modifications. So we have.
The changes made from the tentative budget include three main items, the first of which in the general fund is the reduction from the major road repair line from $330,000 to $300,000, that's a $30,000 reduction. Secondly, we increased the meeting broadcast line from the original $9,000, because we've already spent $1,500 in this current fiscal year, it's unrealistic to only spend $900 in the coming year, so therefore that line has been increased to $2,000. Finally, in the general, excuse me, in the sewer fund, the polymer line was initially set at $6,000, however it will go up to $7,000, because the costs that John needs to make for that particular item, $6,000 will not be enough, so that will reduce the amount in the reserve funding, but increase that line by $1,000.
Now, just taking note of what those budget modifications are, and note of those in the tentative budget.
Yes, sir.
Next then, we have a resolution to adopt the modified 2019-20 tentative budget for the general and for the sewer funds. This has been discussed at last month's, or last, the last Village Board meeting, and the additions and changes to those have just been noted in the line for the DPW roadwork from $330,000 to $300,000, the TV broadcast from $900 to $2,000 increase, and for the sewer in terms of polymer to $6,000 to $7,000. Otherwise, everything remains the same as it was presented last time.
Absolutely, and the only additional change as a result of those changes are a surplus of $30,789 for the year.
Say that again, please.
As a result of the changes just mentioned, that will create a $30,769 surplus in the budget.
Good.
We will underspend by that amount.
Nice. Well done.
I have a motion to approve the tentative 2019-2020 budget modifications and budget for this coming year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any additional comments?
Next, sir. Well done.
No?
Yes.
Well done, Christine.
Okay, we are, Agenda Item Number Five, resolution to approve the minutes of April 11. I think everybody had a chance to look this over and note any of the changes that need to be made, are there any?
No.
Not, if it looks good, then I would ask for a motion to approve the.
I second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, budget modifications, we have, I believe, two of them this evening. The first comes to us from a sidewalk equipment and capital overlay, change from that line, AA 5410 dot 200, $20,000, to line AA dot 5112 dot 201 vehicle. This will allow for the purchase of a Kubota utility vehicle with an attached water tank to be used for watering the village plants. The current gator is near its expiration date, and funds in the sidewalk line won't be needed as the lap of project, and won't be as expensive as initially budgeted for, so that is to, I believe, fund the new vehicle. And then, secondly, the sewer fund budget modification from GG 8130 dot 458, digester repair maintenance, $829.50, to GG 8130 dot 456, instrumentation maintenance. This is to allow for the E-fluent flow meter, the emergency centrifuge repair made this line go over budget this year. So I believe those are the two budget modifications, totaling $20,000, $20,829.50. And I have a motion to approve those budget modifications.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now we have a motion, a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I believe that Jerry, who is not here this evening, did come in and looked at the claims and warrants, and Carl, you did as well, so do you have any particular concerns with these? I know Jerry did not, or had his questions answered.
Jake?
Yes.
What's an energy surcharge? I saw, and I don't want to go through the whole thing, but it stuck, stuck behind me at, a surcharge for delivering things to the sewer?
I didn't see exactly what, sometimes they.
It isn't much, but I was just wondering, what, about $14 or whatever, would they charge for gas use or something?
Sometimes it's a fuel surcharge, based on the cost of the diesel or gasoline, whatever the truck they were, they had to set it at a base, and it might fluctuate through the year, up or down.
But you think that they would put that in the, you know, instead of a second charge?
I think they added because of, they have the opportunity to lower it, you know, they made, like, the asphalt's based on an index, and then as the new price comes out every month, that, you know, it's adjusted the cost of, or now it's a form that, so it allows flexibility, so you're paying more accurate rate, luckily it allows it to come down too, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions you would like to address? Then if you have a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Moving now to Agenda Item Number Eight, this is looking at the financial statements for the month. Looks like we are fairly well on track, actually, in terms of the budget. We do have some lines that are over, but it looks like the majority of them are under, and significantly under.
I will additionally point out in that report, I haven't had the opportunity to go through every line just yet, I'm doing a reconciliation between the old system and the new system, so that is still a project that I will have completed by the end of May, or at least in time for the auditor to come review our records, but that is still on the table, I just have not had a chance to look at all the lines yet. It's quite a time-consuming task, so.
Over your opinion, we're doing fairly well?
Yes.
In terms of hitting our goals?
Yes.
Okay, any particular questions that you might have on any of the new budget items?
Yeah, I'll get it.
And we will move then to the attorney, what do you have for us this evening, Dan?
Well, the only thing I did was, you know, I sent you and all an email yesterday about the agreement, the town would like regarding the sewage disposal, and I need some direction as to get back to the town. So there needs to be, there needs to be a new agreement. I don't believe there is any deadline or expiration date in the existing agreements, so, you know, you're not under a time pressure, but the 79 agreement, in my view, does not accurately reflect either the present integration of the village and town sewer SDP plants, nor does it reflect historically what's been done over, you know, the last 30 years or 40 years in the area. So there either needs, you know, and again, I don't know where you're at with the whole consolidation thing, but obviously if there's a consolidation, that's one form of an agreement. If there is not a consolidation, then there should be agreement that just reflects what the actual use is, and whatever requirements the town has as the owner of the speedies permit, you know, that they're gonna require of the village, and, you know, maintain the existing arrangement, but the town's looking for some direction that the village is going in.
And we just got the information.
I have no clue, and again, as my email said, my understanding was, is that at some point there was gonna be a joint meeting. That meeting hasn't happened, I don't know why it hasn't happened, I don't know if anybody owes anybody else any information or not, and what's holding up scheduling a meeting, but, you know, I don't even know if you want to have a meeting at this point, but I think just something needs to be said to them about what the village wants to do.
It was my understanding that when they, their sewer people, you know, Peter and all, when they had together what it was going to involve with the village as well as with the town, they were going to make that presentation to us, they were going to say, okay, let's have a meeting. I don't know what they're waiting for, for the village to come to them and say, you know, we're sitting here waiting for you to, to, you know, schedule a meeting, or whether you want us to schedule a meeting or not, I don't know. But that was, that was my original impression, that they had very little left to do back in, whenever it was, February, I believe, and they were going to complete that and then get back to us, well, it's March and April at this particular point, and I have heard nothing from them, and I did not believe that it was the village's responsibility. So I don't know where that leads.
Well, so if you want, I don't think it would be unreasonable for someone, and if you want me to contact the town attorney and say that if the town, that the village is prepared to go forward with the joint meeting, and their understanding that the town was putting together all of the information necessary the whole day, and if they've got all of their information, please schedule a meeting.
Please proceed.
Okay.
Jake, did you have any more information on that?
No, we met with them, you know, initially when they came in here in October, and they presented some information, we had some questions, and they were brought up from the board and some others, we provided those questions, they requested additional information, we met, provided that information, and we met again, that's why I was just looking through my calendar to see, I think we were scheduled in January, but we met, it looks like the last time, February, the end of February, the 27th, and went over things within that, and yeah, that was my understanding, is we were just kinda waiting, waiting to hear back from them once they had, you know, the information. I know there was a little bit of discussion after that between the engineers about finding points in the details, as far as information that they were looking for, but I believe, my understanding was, we were gonna say, all right, now we're ready, now we have the information together, and let's get together again, and I think that was gonna be just a meeting, you know, join me in the board, or a presentation before there was an official joint meeting, I guess, you know, just like in a workshop or something where they can present the information, the updated information.
That's how I felt.
I thought we were waiting for them also.
Because we did have some questions.
Well, and.
Yeah, we can reach out through, reach out through the engineers, they have to contact their engineer and see just anyone's, how close are we to scheduling something together to review the information that was.
That would be good.
It's a lot of effort and assembling that together, and it'd be good to review it, so, yeah, I can reach out, I just don't know. Don, if you want to let them know that, you know, we're all the talk.
Well, I'll tell Charlie and I see that, that the village was under the impression that they were waiting to hear from the town's engineers, that they were ready to set a meeting, and then, I guess, Jake, are you gonna contact their engineer or somebody to?
Yes, that's me.
So I'll say, I'll say the village will be in a position to give some direction as to a new agreement after the meeting is held, right?
Yeah.
All right, that makes sense to me.
That's where I thought we left it back beyond February.
That's where I thought it was.
Do we have to have a timeframe on this?
Well, like you said, it's sort of, no, I, like I said, that, I believe I convinced the town attorney that there is no 40-year expiration date to the 79 agreement, and I think he agrees, and it's governed by General Municipal Law Section 120, so there isn't any deadline by which a new contract needs to be entered into, but one just should be entered into, because the old one is, is just not a good contract, from either, I think from either the town or the village's point of view. That's all I have.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
If we may revisit, please, the adopted budget. Don just brought up a very good point, which I quickly just checked, in the five years that I've been here, we've never had a surplus in our budget. We've always appropriated from fund balance, or had a balanced budget, therefore I do not believe that that is allowed, so I will recommend to lose that $30,330 and fund reserves, and thus will, I believe you would mean, a new motion to adopt the revised budget, which will fund the reserves with the surplus. So the budget will be balanced, not exist above surplus, because that's not allowed.
You need to adopt a, you always need to adopt a balanced budget, meaning expected revenues equal expected expenditures. You can't consciously budget for a surplus, because then you're basically taking money from the taxpayers and.
Doing what with it?
With no reason, no reason to do it. So if it's gonna go into a reserve account, you gotta specify which reserve account is going into, don't you just say transfer to reserves, which one is it?
Well, yes, the transfers to reserves, that's exactly what, how the adopted budget reads.
Well, is that accurate? Shouldn't, shouldn't people know which reserve account is going into?
We can decide that right now.
Aren't there more than one reserve?
We have the Commercial Street, Donovan Street, the Wealth Commissioning Line.
Or the vehicle one, isn't there?
The Vehicle Line.
I like, Jamie, like, don't.
Take it away.
Shall we sell some of your jewelry?
Why would you take it away?
Just.
I didn't.
Well, they did, I didn't, I wasn't saying you, but.
So the difference is exactly $30,769, that you would like to move to which reserve?
Well, if you took some away from the vehicle reserve fund.
Well, it was taken from major road repairs.
If, if you, in your, in the budget process, in the first go around, if you were expecting, or there was a request to fund that particular reserve account at X dollars, and you said, no, we can't afford it, we're gonna go down to Y dollars, but now you got an extra 30, I don't know what the difference was, but maybe you should just put it back, put the 30 back where it was originally requested. Or the alternative is, is it doesn't have to go to reserves, you can just, it'll just, it'll just change the tax rate, just eliminate it from the budget and change the tax rate. Well, if I'm Joe Taxpayer, that's probably the preferred method, just because it might require some additional accounting, and somebody redoing the math to come up with a tax rate is another topic.
Can't do that, I'm saying, like I said, it has to be a balanced budget, since you've reduced major road repairs by $30,000, it needs to be reallocated somewhere, or, as Don recommended, the tax rate has to go down.
Well, why don't we just put it back in the?
It could go to Donovan Street, it could go to.
Yeah.
There'd be wealth.
Then move it in later.
So the reserves are, give me one second here.
So there's building reserve?
There's equipment rotation, New York State Retirement, Donovan Commercial, and Wealth Commissioning.
We don't have a building one?
No. Okay, you can create one if you'd like, but that probably needs to be created before we decide to put it in the budget, so.
Yeah, and that takes formal resolutions. Yeah, and that takes formal resolutions.
Put it back and then we'll do budget notifications later if I need it.
So put into Equipment Rotation? Or split it among all of them equally? Yes, I keep track of these things.
Well, what have we done with the water? You know, I mean, that's at some point needs to be, well...
It does.
And so does Donovan and, uh...
Just a quick question. If we're appropriating a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from the reserves, can't we appropriate thirty thousand dollars less than that from the reserves?
Yeah.
And then we square?
Did you want to join the accounting team?
Nope.
Yeah, that's a good...
Yes.
Yeah.
Really good idea.
Just divest the thirty thousand amongst, you know, reduce it equally.
Yes.
And just prorate it amongst all the reserves.
Thank you, Mr. Accounting. Appreciate that. That makes it very simplified. Sweet.
I agree with that.
Yep.
So...
I apologize for the late date.
So, so you do need a formal motion because you are, you are amending the budget as adopted like fifteen minutes ago.
And that effect, then Chris, would be to...
So that in effect will make our budget balanced at an amount of two million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. That will be the budget for the year. Income equaling expenditures.
I make the motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
What's going on, Jake?
Wild cover. See you, Ed.
Jake did it, that's all.
Thank you, Jake, for that, and we'll insight. Uh, code enforcement. We've been waiting to hear from you for a while, I believe.
At least thirty days. Thank you, Will. Thank you, everybody, and, uh, thank you for the budget, passing the balanced budget. Um, just looking at the villain report is that I really don't have anything, um, major to report on except, uh, this is a time of year where I have to complete my stormwater pollution prevention annual report for the DEC. So I've been crunching the numbers and working on that and getting all the information together to complete that on a timely manner. So that's been taking up some of my time. Uh, I noticed the other day when I was driving through the neighborhood, um, being proactive in code enforcement, uh, that fourteen, uh, Southwick is now being worked on.
Yeah.
And I introduced myself to the, the workers just so they know who I am. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad that something's finally being done. I hope they work on the outside soon and picking up the debris. But I'm just glad that, uh, there's movement in that.
Did you go in?
I did.
Was it pretty nasty?
Um, not as bad as I thought it would be. Um, I've seen worse, much worse.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't think they really have to invest a lot in there, but I didn't go into the basement either. And I know the basement was flooded at one time. Uh, so, but, uh, that's what happens when you turn the power off and the salt pump doesn't work and the heat doesn't work. It gets cold, pipe bursts, et cetera, et cetera. And, and that's it, really. One thing I would like to speak towards, um, and just to be preemptive, I guess, we had some phone calls regarding how we handle permits for political signs. We don't permit political signs. We permit temporary signs. We're allowed to permit the number of signs, the size of the sign, the color of the sign, uh, location of the sign, uh, like our right of way or something like that. But we, it, we can't differentiate legally between the type of sign, you know? Uh, certainly, uh, in the case of what we refer to as political signs, there's a constitutional right for people to express freedom of speech when it comes to that. And I, I'm not an attorney. However, I rely on documents written by attorneys. And, uh, one of the documents I have in front of me is called Municipal Control of Signs. And, uh, near our state, uh, the Division of Local Government Services puts out different types of literature. And, and this is one of them. And so I trust it. And, uh, the original publication date was two thousand and sixteen, and it was revised in two thousand and fifteen. But, um, one of the things, the, the one good thing I like about these types of publications, and if anybody ever wants to see this for review, it's in my office and I'll be more than happy to show you it. Uh, it gives case law, uh, so that, you know, we're not just shooting from the hip. And I don't like to do that. I'm, I'm a reader. Uh, you'll find me a lot of times at my desk reading, uh, law and code and everything. But, um, the, I ran into this, a very dear friend of mine, Dali Kuyaba, uh, came into my office probably twelve years ago. And she said, you know, you might want to look into this. And so I did, and we changed everything. The only thing that we do need to change, which I actually made a handwritten note in our, our local law, is it does differentiate in our local law as far as time and when, uh, political signs have to come down. So I wrote in my, in my own law that it's not enforceable. However, if, if you ever look at our temporary zycrement, there, there's no word on here that says political. It just says temporary sign. And we treat all signs the same. So that's how we get around it. So if anybody ever gets a phone call from an elected official and they're wondering, you know, why do we require signs for, um, you know, campaigns and, or, excuse me, why do we require permits for campaign signs and so on? It's because we can. But only because we treat them as temporary signs, not as political signs. So everybody's the same across the board.
What's the status of Jojo's and sort of those?
Everybody's got their permits, uh, and they're working like themes. I, I, I think they're, um, what do I want to say?
So is April a lot?
Yeah, I know. That's, that's what I was getting at. I, I think they're enthusiastic about that date. Um, they're, the, one thing I will say, um, is that I've had a very good working relationship with the contractors that work for Mr. Fitzsimmons. Um, and every time I've asked them to do something or change something, they've been, they've bent over backwards to help me and, uh, and meet the code requirements. Uh, they do excellent work. Uh, so even in our code, it talks about doing things in a workmanlike manner. They meet the definition of workmanlike manner. They do a great job. And so I can't say enough about that. So prob, I, I don't want to give you a date or anything like that, but they're moving pretty quickly. So hopefully they'll be making some steaks and pizza pretty soon.
Will, what is, uh, under miscellaneous? Uh, certificates, certificates of occupancy, fifteen, twenty-one East Main, hair salon, but is that, is there more than just a hair salon?
Nope, just, uh, that one is where the R Salon used to be.
Right.
Uh, so they, they put in a hair salon in there.
But is that fifteen through twenty-one?
Yeah, well, that's the legal address of it. So, you know, if you look at our, um, our list of properties, according to tax ID, it'll say, you know, fifteen to twenty-one. But somewhere in there is the real address, the mailing address, you know, it's like fifteen or something like that. So...
All right. Any, any questions for Will? Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Will.
Sure. Thanks, Jack. Well...
Thank you.
And we are now at DPW.
I know a couple meetings ago, I think we discussed the, uh, intermunicipal agreement we have with the school and the Northeast Joint Fire District in regards to the joint, uh, healing facility. Um, we did meet, uh, myself and, um, one of the commissioners, Mr. Hoffman and Steve Small from the district, Metlin and Blaine, trying to have them at the school this morning, just kind of go over, primarily, uh, any changes to that agreement. So the district's, uh, going to be, uh, the fire district, excuse me, not school district. Fire district's going to be drafting something up based on our discussion. And what we're looking at doing is kind of making sure that the fire district and the, um, the village become all users of, uh, it might be a shared use agreement, um, for the controlling facilities. Um, we, we had a shared, it was always the schools, but it was almost written as a shared ownership agreement in a way, or at least we shared a significant amount of liability. Um, what we want to do is kind of shift that, even if we have a premium on top of what are the gallons that we get or if it's a yearly pay, we know what the inspection costs are going to be and we know what the maintenance cost. The only ongoing operation and maintenance of the facility is, we can do, something we can budget will have known cost rather than exposure to unknown cost. So that is one thing we're looking at doing with that update. It's not, it's not, uh, up to, for renewal till the end of the year, but we wanted to get started early on it. Um, we also, there was a discussion, it's been a little bit, um, but about the agreement with WXXI for the antenna. We're on Wood Road. And we sent that to them today. We've been waiting for their, um, comments and feedback. There's, and I don't know if I mentioned it at the last meeting, but we just had a little bit of work started on the Rob Cemetery. There's an Eagle Scout doing a project there. He did a cleanup down there and, you know, put in some mulch. It's meant to put in some mulch around the tree. And we also look at, there's a little low fence that we're going to be putting, similar to the one at Dr. Dunne's house there on the corner of East Main and Dunne. Um, so that fence that's going to be going on, he's, well, he's having it done before July. So I would expect that they're going to get it done here pretty soon. And the Laton Park Island, I know that we were, uh, fortunate enough, I guess, to have somebody wipe the slate clean for us so we can start fresh. And I think, you know, just on different things we're hearing, I, you, I want to make sure that we're, you know, filling everybody's expectations, um, maybe trying to get together and before we do anything in there, um, come up with a little sketch. I know historic preservation has a, has an interest in it, an aspect. We talked about different, you know, different things. And I was talking to the mayor yesterday about it. I think a great idea is maybe one central focus, a tree and, you know, different island or different treatments on the end of it. Um, is, in the memorial part, something a little lower, um, that might be a really good setup. But it'd be good to have a...
A muffler and clearers?
Kind of like a ramp, yes. Completely clear next time. But maybe we'll just try, before we pull the trigger and purchase anything, I want to try to prepare a, a sketch and even work with, I know we had a group who were working with different land... Yeah, something that, you know, let's make sure we want to do it one time and make everybody happy is our goal.
Because before the accident, we had Bill Vendel down there. He gave us a design.
Oh, did he?
But that means we had three trees and a whole lot of, you know, other...
Yeah, now we, now we've got a slate.
But I called him, so, you know, he hasn't gotten back to me. I know this is his busy time.
Yeah, so let's try to get something to be on top of, get something to be on their own.
Were you, were you going to talk to Mike, Kopecky, the tree?
I, I know, Linda, we talked to one of the, the, uh, tree companies too, one of the suppliers.
First, okay.
Um, and it was Burge Grass.
Yeah.
Um, I think because of, you know, where we are, we want to put something in there, they can, they can get ones that we can guarantee in there too. So at least for the guarantee of for a couple of years, roots go down.
Yeah, the roots go down right in the, right, yeah.
I want to do cactuses because the roots are over right now. When it's hard, I guess, when joggers are tying their shoes or something.
No flowering tree.
No, no flowering.
I love those. I love those.
I love them too.
See why we didn't buy anything yet?
Well, we have a boat.
We can book.
We can book.
Last thing, last thing I had, um, tomorrow is Arbor Day and you know, the village is a Tree City USA for the third year now. Um, and I think we have a, typically do a proclamation for Arbor Day.
Oh, yeah.
And we're, uh, also fortunate, we, uh, went down, worked in cooperation with the village of Rockport today. We were both getting trees from Cornell. They have a hybrid oak that they've developed. And as part of an ongoing project, they want to plant them in different areas and monitor these trees and track their growth and track out their doing. So, um, we worked with, like, so Rockport was going down to Cornell to get some. And so we tagged along with them and helped them out loading them and tie them down. And they dropped them back off on the way through. So we've got our five trees are getting ready. Hopefully, I don't think the weather's going to cooperate with us for tomorrow, so I think it's more likely going to be Monday. But we have the trees up, ready, going. We're going to plant some in Wilmerite Park to provide some shade. You know, with some of the construction that went on there, the shade that we used to have on the south end of the park is no longer there. So going to try to put some there along the playground equipment and then also, uh, one at Shands Park too.
Do we know what they are?
They're a hybrid oak tree. Um, and they said, based on the parentage, they think that they're going to, the fleshings. There you go. And, um, based on the parentage, they think it's going to be a medium to a large tree, but they really, they really don't know. Because it's, they're brand new. They have, these are new, new trees. So it'd be fun to, uh, to watch these and see, see what they do, yeah.
So it could flower, you know?
I don't think it could flower.
Remember, oak trees, they get their leaves in the spring right into your gas.
Sign me up.
Jake?
Yes, sir.
What's the status of, uh, Shands Park tennis court?
Well, we've had some different discussions over the time of reducing the tennis court, going down to one tennis court, increasing the parking lot. Um, we've worked on some plans. Uh, when we were looking for a particular grant last year or the year before now, we worked with Sue Steele. Uh, she's from Fairport, uh, Bad Chapel, when we were applying for the certain grant it was. I don't know what that sound is. But we did, uh, you know, for the Veterans Park, and we also, there's a small design that was made for, uh, Shands Park. Um, but it wasn't, it was a concept, um, design. It wasn't, you know, all the way out where we had the dimensions and things. So, yeah, so it's, I guess, the same as it was last time we talked about it. There's a concept out there. Um, there's interest in moving forward there. You know, there's Parks and Rec Fund, et cetera, fund that could be used for that. Uh, but we'd have to develop deeper plans to be able to get, you know, better cost estimates and things on it before we consider using the, using the Parks and Rec funds. And, oh, that wasn't the last thing. Before we do the Arbor Day thing, um, the sidewalks are going, I think you mentioned, the sidewalks are going on the, uh, south side of Elm, east side of Laton. Again, this was a community development block grant, um, through Monroe County Planning and Development. Um, and it allows us to do these. This area was in a low to moderate income area on the map, uh, which wasn't typical. Um, and there's sidewalks, you know, there's sidewalks all over the village where we could, where we could do things. Um, and it's provided us an opportunity to, we want to go to the bike and sidewalks. It's very hard to plow. Snow with a four-foot, snowplow and four-foot sidewalk is, it's, we don't, you know, don't, do not run by GPS, you know? So, what's it? Yes, and, and obviously, and there's accessibility, um, things, the concerns that we have. And we want to make sure that the sidewalks are, are getting accessible. And, um, so it's basically a, they call it a win-win, I guess. We were able to get these things out there really, virtually no cost to the taxpayer or local taxpayer from the, you know, from the village standpoint with these, it's odd funds that come down through. Monroe County manages it for most of the municipalities in Monroe County. Um, and it's a, you know, it's a great program. So we were able to get this in while it was still in the area where it was, uh, where it qualified. Um, and next year, next map, they're, they're out of the area. So then we'll be able to have funds to use in, in other areas. So they're still, either they're still located through the Community Development Block Grant. Um, and this area will be, we're already done with the sidewalks.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, the guys did a great job and, and so quick.
Yeah.
Because I live on Laton... Because I live on Laton, and I was amazed.
And the residents have been, have been really great, I mean, there's, obviously, with any project, there's some concerns, they're, you know, like, we try to make sure we've got good communications, that you're there free to express the concerns, and, you know, we try to do whatever we can. It's a big disruption, if you can't get into your driveway for a week, it's a big disruption, we recognize that, and it's a, it's a tough thing, you're trying to make it better, so it's a tough little period to have, so we can have something nicer there, so.
Well, some of the houses don't even have driveways, back in the old days, when there were two houses, one driveway for the barn that had the horses and that and things, so, and Old Street is one of those.
Yeah, absolutely, but, no, I've heard, it's all coming together, so, I'm, I ought to be done with that really, really quick, and then I'll go back through and do the rehab and put the driveways back, and I think we'll have access back in there, so. Jake?
Thank you.
In light of that, I would like to read a proclamation, this is for Arbor Day, and it says, proclamation, this twenty-fifth day of April two thousand and nineteen, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture a special day to set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas National Arbor Day is always celebrated on the last Friday in April, and whereas the Village of Webster wishes to join the communities across the nation in celebration of Arbor Day, and whereas the Village of Webster wishes to promote and recognize the benefits and importance of trees, and whereas the village recognizes the truth in the words of the nineteenth-century Scottish poet Alexander Smith, quote, "A man doesn't plant a tree for himself, he plants it for posterity," and the village further hopes that this celebration will continue as an annual tradition in our community, which will help secure the benefits of trees for generations to come. Now, therefore, I, Darrell Byers, Mayor of the Village of Webster, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, as Arbor Day in the Village of Webster, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I direct the Village of Webster Department of Public Works to plant trees in recognition of this Arbor Day, and I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations in recognition of Arbor Day in the Village of Webster, dated this twenty-fifth day of April two thousand and nineteen. So.
Everybody's celebrating.
Everybody's celebrating.
Flowering tree.
There are, there are a couple of them in the village, so enjoy them.
Get ready for the meeting, I have one final, one final point, please. Look at me. I don't know if anybody's noticed a loud hum at night in the Village of Webster, heard that around bedtime. It's a very annoying hum coming from the direction of Xerox, and some of my neighbors contacted me and said, what is that noise that we hear almost every night during the week?
I don't even live in the village, I hear it, I left a past eight-year-old school, I hear it too, and it's like at midnight.
Yeah, it's right around there, and generally comes on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, and so my wife and I went in search of that noise and found that at the, on the west end of building two twenty-five on the Xerox campus, it's pretty loud, once you get right next to it, it's really loud, and I'm wondering if there might be something that we can do, Dr. Xerox, or what about that very irritating noise, hum?
Oh, absolutely, I wish somebody would have let me know ahead of time, we've dealt with Xerox, well, dealt with, we've in the past had communicated with Xerox over a similar issue, and the gentleman that I used to communicate with is no longer with Xerox, but now I think I have another contact that I can get ahold of, and so I absolutely don't call him, let him know.
It's really irritating.
But you say this by building two twenty-five, the west end?
I believe it's the west end of two twenty-five.
Okay.
It's on South Road.
Sure, yeah, it was some type of fan.
Yeah, it is, a fan, a large fan.
Could be the same one.
It probably is.
All right.
Check in.
You're welcome, thank you. Large fan, yeah, and I don't, you know, I mean, the closer you get, it goes louder.
But this is where life is worth living.
It is.
Work on it all.
It's very detrimental.
I haven't been asleep like that.
You hear it though, right?
I do.
But I do.
Darrell, he sounds like it.
I wish I did.
Well, if you would look into that, I would, oh, absolutely, I appreciate it.
I'll unplug it.
Let me do it.
We'll revisit it sometime, so I'll see what's on. Sure, sure. Thank you, Will. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for the, good of the, if not, then it is seven fifty-eight, and I entertain a motion to, close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it shouldn't pass. Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you next time.